And we're going to load it back up after it's not live streaming, so I'm not going to stick to that 11:30. So. All right, we are back from recess and I'm going to, oh, I see Sarah's still not here, but I'm going to go ahead and start opening this up to any council questions. And if we could, maybe we could come up with how we feel comfortable doing this. Do y'all want to just each person take turns and get theirs? You know, if they have any, or do you want to just have like a potluck?
Well, the reason to say that, if we, if we had each person, is we might be jumping to this department, then back to the other.
I mean, from each department. So, once we start in a department, we go down the line and then we're done with that department. You want to do that? Do you have something to start with? Which one would you like to start with? Which department?
Whichever department is first in the book.
Sure, that sounds good.
Oh, I did have a couple of questions from the transmittal letter.
Is your mic on?
Oh.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Couple of questions from the transmittal letter. Later, I'll ask you personally, I don't need to do this here, about some of the things that were cut, just out of curiosity, to know some of the things that we needed to cut to get where we are. But, I'll leave that for the museum. On the evaluations, which I'm glad we're doing this, on the 360 evaluation, is that the Carl Vincent one?
It is.
Okay, I just want to mention something that was a concern when we did this before, because they usually have a quality product and everything else. We did do some of this some years back. It's very important that it protect the anonymity, there we go, of the people who are reporting. I remember calling them or emailing them afterwards, because aside from the basic checkmark evaluation or fill-in-the-box, they included direct quotes from people who did the evaluation on whether it was their director or city manager, and if the quotes can at all be personal identifying, they need to not be included. Because that was an issue the last time we used that. The quotes were so specific that it could allow a director or a city manager to narrow down and pinpoint who that was, and that's not anonymous if that happened. So, that's just, just something to consider.
So, let me talk about that just for a minute. In that last 360 that you're talking about, those evaluations only went to the individual. So, this one is different in that they are going to, to make a cumulative report, to report back to the mayor and council for these, for the department heads and for the city manager and the deputy city manager. Now, with regard to those specific comments being on a document, we do need to make sure that that doesn't happen, except that I don't remember reading any of those. So, Sarah, will you just make sure that we address that when we, when we contract this?
Yeah.
Because this is something they're actually doing for us, different than what they normally do. Remember before, we didn't get a cumulative report and we didn't get other people's evaluations if they didn't volunteer them.
I may be speaking to before you were on the governing body.
Right, I think you're talking about.
This goes back prior to Tom.
A prior city manager.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. But, we've done it since then, and this one will be a different variation of that.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, so that's the governing body or the transmittal letter. Do you have anything else on that?
I think I'll wait.
I think I'll wait to talk more about the public information officer, maybe when we get to that in the, yeah, that's it. I think that's it on that one.
And we'll get to that as well. Mr. Carter, do you have anything?
On the TextMyGov, I'm not familiar with that website. Is that, that's been up and running for a while.
It has. Who wants to talk about that? Sarah or Jennifer?
I'm looking for, I'm assuming that, because that gives me a way to communicate with my constituents.
Yes, we do not currently have TextMyGov. This would be a new system that we would have, and it would be something that, like you said, we could communicate more than just water and sewer issues or anything like with robo-calls. We could actually reach out to citizens for any kind of programs that we're offering, any.
Is this something out, you put on the city website, we operate through it?
Yes.
And so, we don't have it on the personal phone or something like that, or we could go through the phone to the city.
Correct. We're required, if we go with TextMyGov, we're required to keep the emblem on our website. That's one of the requirements. And then, they could go in there and we set it up with different keywords. So, depending on what the citizen may have a question about, we'll lead them, we'll lead that comment to a particular department to answer and to help, and, but it also allows us to disseminate information across the board.
And so, it would allow each of us, council members, to send messages out to our wards, or actually out to the public?
Yes, to the public. I don't know if it gets as specific to the wards, but yeah.
Unless they know it specifically, it would go to the public in general.
Correct.
One-way communication, us to them, not something where they communicate to the government entity, like reporting a concern or something. That's what I'm trying to find out.
Yes, that is part of, a component of it.
Oh, great.
Goes both ways.
Okay, Ms. Young.
My question is for Tom. Would you go through the thought process, the rationale for the public information officer?
So, the, part of this is taking advantage of an opportunity, but in terms of how it fits into the context of what we're doing, we have a lot of cooks in the kitchen right now, as you can imagine, from talking to the staff. We've got multiple Facebook pages, multiple websites, multiple operators of some of those, and definitely multiple operators of all of those. So, we're running, it's sort of territorial. So, the police has got their thing, Wesley's got his thing, Janet's got her thing, recreation's got their thing, city hall is sort of running, you know, a whole lot of it. Personnel has interests that are different than finance. Nobody's really overseeing any of it, because at the end of the day, it would be up to, you know, me and Sarah, and that's not where our head is. And I need somebody who lives that, who's thinking about what are we saying, what are people saying to us, what's the messaging? I mean, right now, it's just all over the place. At some point in time, I would like to see us do two, two additional things. One would be that we do a branding campaign, because our branding is like our Facebook and our website. It's just all over the place. Colors and, you know, logos and all kinds of stuff. So, we need to, you know, professionalize that and bring that together. And when we do that, once we get the color scheme from that, we would redo the website, right, and make it more uniform, because right now, it's all over the place. So, this is sort of the first step toward a process of greater professionalism, a more cohesive look. But, it's the message that's really disjointed now, and no, and most of us are not writers. You know, some of us are okay at writing, but, you know, having a writer and a communicator, somebody that just thought about that and wasn't thinking about managing police officers or scheduling recreational activities, but could actually think about that. I think, I think all that's a benefit. The question is, are we at that point yet as a city, right? We're at 18,000 people, or 17,000 people. We're in a lull right now, because we're not growing, right? Once we built all those houses that we inherited from the recession, we quit growing. So, the question is, is this the right time? That's really, to me, the issue. It's not a question, are we going to get, are we going to get there? The question is, are we there today where we can benefit from it?
Do you have any, go ahead.
Do you envision this as a consolidation of all of these social media attempts into, into one city website that, that covers all of it? Or is this person going to manage the police Facebook page and Main Street Facebook page? Are those still going to exist under the current departments?
Yeah, I think the structure will stay a lot like it is, but we'll have somebody at the top of all that that's watching what everybody's doing. And then, and then we can interact at multiple levels with y'all at the department head level within those work groups and say, okay, this is where you can do better, here's where we're disjointed. But, more than that, someone who can sit and think about what is it we're doing and what's the message that we want to get out there. Rate increases, that's important. Something like the roundabout where you've got some kind of physical change. You know, if we're having issues with recreation because of COVID, you know, that's a whole nother messaging thing that we, you know, the mayor and Sarah and I got into last year. And, I mean, it's all just on top of everything. You know, nobody's really got the job of taking what we want to do and actually doing it and doing it consistently and doing it well and keeping up with it. So, I, I think it'd be a huge step up from what we're doing.
So, let me just, so, maybe I'm going to be a little bit, maybe more clear, maybe more muddy. But, what we're looking at is, is somehow streamlining the information, the flow of information. So, while each of these folks would still have their own access to their own Facebooks and, and working it from their angle, this person's job would be to be a messaging center for the city. They would probably start handling the newsletter every week. They would start streamlining all of the information that's coming from these various departments and their Facebooks. This is about, you know, sort of moving our messaging forward. I mean, one of the things I heard last Tuesday or two Tuesdays ago was in this room, you know, we didn't know, we didn't hear about it. But, the truth is, that information had been out there for months. And I think if you have somebody whose job it is to do that and the public knows where that's coming from, then you can streamline that information to the public and they're getting it. And whether we're there today or not, as Tom says, you know, we might have to make that decision here, but it'd be better for us to be prepared for it, because we will be there. There's no question about that. It, it will be a real need. Even Councilman Montahan, which I try not to single anybody out, but he, he asked me a few days ago, he said, you know, why do we not have a single letterhead across the city? And he said, this may be trivial, but it's really not trivial. I mean, how often do I go into one of your offices around here and go, I like that letterhead? And sometimes I go, I don't like that letterhead at all. But, everybody has a different letterhead. I have a different letterhead. But, there ought to be a citywide, consistent brand of letterhead. He's right about that, but that's not something we're doing today. But, this kind of person looks at that. They look at how the city and its residents see us, how we're seen from the outside, and they help to, to manage that as a public information officer. So, that, that, I hope that gives some information. All right, Mr. Carter, I'll get you in a second.
Okay, you mentioned something that I've got pounded on, that roundabout on 61 Pumpkin Town Road. Everybody's running through that thing like it's a straightaway. Nobody's going in the circles, they're running over the cones. I'm getting a lot of complaints. Is that thing supposed to be finished or?
Friday.
What's going on with it?
Friday.
I mean, it, it's obviously an accident waiting to happen the way they're going through it.
So, you want to go ahead and talk about the schedule and everything that's going on?
Yeah, well, I don't like it as much as I did. They, the original schedule was the contractor was going to come and work from like nine at night to seven in the morning on a Friday night, but now, they're going to come at eight-thirty in the morning. So, I'm thinking Friday is going to be a day where a trip to Macon would be a good idea.
That's completely different than what was put out to the city council on, on, on the proposed plan. So.
Okay.
And of course, of course, I put that out to Mirror Lake, because a lot of Mirror Lake people are affected by traveling on Pumpkin Town Road, which the, the area toward 61 will be rerouted onto.
Old Stone.
Old Stone, and you won't be able to make a, a turn onto Pumpkin Town Road headed, headed toward I-20.
All right, well, hang on a second. Let me let Mr. Carter finish and then.
So, what is going to be the final outcome on the roundabout itself? What's it going to look like?
They're, they're just going to do some kind of treatment in the middle, but it will be, it's designed so that it can be driven on. So, when a truck comes through there and cuts onto it, it's just going to be a short curb. It's not going to be like a wall or.
You're, you're talking about the center of it, but I think Mr. Carter is saying that when you go out there right now, it looks just.
It's unfinished.
Completely unfinished. There are cones out there, there are barrels out there, there's no striping.
The barrels have all been run over.
How it's going to be finished. Does Bobby need to talk about that?
Yeah, Bobby.
They're going to stripe it, they're going to get up the cones, they're going to do the landscaping around it.
Is there going to be construction in the middle?
There'll be concrete.
Yeah, I mean, how, how, it's concrete. You say the trucks can run over it.
Let's let him tell us.
The, uh, they're going to do the pour in the center. It'll be concrete, and it won't be raised that high. Like Tom says, it's going to be to where if, if a truck comes through there and he, and, and if his trailer wants to track one way, it'll, it'll just track over the middle of it. As soon as they get the concrete work done, they'll do, they'll finish all the striping and the signage, et cetera.
What can we expect on Friday, though?
They're going to pour all the concrete on Friday.
Well, I mean, just in terms of the actual work being done. I understand there's going to be traffic issues, there's going to be, but they're just going to do the concrete on Friday?
Yes.
Okay. When, when do we anticipate the striping in the actual finished product?
Without conversing with, with Grant Waldrop, the District Six engineer, I understand they're having some issues with the contractor. I would, I would assume shortly after that, within, within two weeks after they get that concrete done, they should come out and finish that thing.
Okay. And, and I've seen this, this messaging going out to council and myself, but how are we communicating that to the public? Are you having it put out in the newsletter? Okay, we need to make sure.
She'll put it on Facebook.
It was on Facebook?
Yeah, she'll put it on Facebook. I'll give it to her when I get back.
All right, well, let's make sure we do that today. But, again, that's your PIO.
Yeah, that's two, two days away.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll get it out today, right? You'll get it out today, Bobby?
Yes, today.
Today, get it out today.
Is it?
Okay, there's going to be signs.
Ms. Carter, Ms. McPherson.
Is there any way, because 90% of the people that go that way are not going to see the Facebook. I don't see the Facebook. Is there any way we can have signs out there warning, Friday, construction, detour in effect? Because the people that use it every day are the ones that are going to need to know that it's going to take a lot longer to get to work. Because I think one lane is being left open, if I recall. One lane has to be, but they're going to detour them up around near the hospital and back on Old Stone and vice versa?
They're, they're going to keep, they're going to keep one lane on 61 open. And yeah, they're going to route the northbound traffic going up Pumpkin Town on the Old Stone. The signage plan, detour plan that they presented to GDOT, they approved it. That's what I sent you guys. And I, I was concerned that there's no, if you're coming from the other way, how are you going to know if you need to turn on Old Stone coming back the other way? Because there's no signage up there.
There's not going to be anybody flagging up there?
Mm-mm.
There's no place to turn around if they don't turn them off there? Even if we had something as simple as, expect delays, Friday, expect delays. I don't know if we can do that. Something to warn people, they might want to find another route. Then, we push everything out on social media.
We, we should be able to put up, to put up something temporarily to let people know.
Well, there's going to be thousands of cars coming off of 20 toward Dallas Highway. They have to, somebody has to be there to turn them off at Old Stone.
Well, they're going to have Pumpkin Town completely blocked, so I mean, you can't go through. They're going to have a barricade up.
Yeah, but what she's saying is, by the time they know there's a barricade.
Yeah.
So, there's got to be a plan for the Old Stone to turn off.
It really needs to be blocked up there. Yeah, it needs to be blocked up there.
Make sure there is some signage out there, though, in case there's Friday morning, be delays. Mr. Carter.
Did anybody produce a sketch of what this thing's going to look like?
No, sir.
We don't have a, nothing?
No, sir.
No visual aids.
Back in 2016, they gave us diagrams for a mini roundabout, but they don't, I don't think they changed. But, they told us June 24th, 2016, that if we accepted, you know, if, if they, they would put it in on their dime, a mini roundabout had diagrams, and they, they refused a, a stop signal, traffic light, but the design hasn't changed in five years.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. McPherson.
Just to clarify something on, they not only gave us diagrams, they gave us the engineer studies that told the way traffic could move if there was a traffic light in comparison to the roundabout, and because there's no turn lanes, the traffic light wasn't going to work. I came to realize that. The way they're designed and, and the reason it's got to be low, if, if you have any memory of when they did the one even in Carrollton down there past the jail on 16, they had to go in and shave the curb down, because it's not that the truck, tractor is driving across it. It's that the, the trailer has to be able to pass over the edges. It'll do the same in this case.
Well, this, this one is a lot smaller in diameter than the one that you're.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the biggest concern.
So, their whole trailer may go.
I guess that was my question about being smaller in diameter. I mean, it does seem very small, and so, it looks like there's some room on the edges, though, where you could put a flare or concrete lane, if you want to call it, but, kind of like all those decal lanes, but where it just kind of would give it a little bit more of a circle shape, just to kind of buff it out a little bit. Is that, is that not? I thought that's what they were going to do. I thought it was just very.
The only, the only thing I have on that roundabout design is just a concept that they gave us back when we had to acquire some, some easement on the north side to be able to get it put in there. If they're going to pour concrete for an eight-hour shift, it'll be more than just the centered portion.
Right.
So, I would think they're going to have some around that outside edge.
Because it doesn't even look like they're using the easements that we acquired. That's kind of, from, from a visual perspective. It doesn't, you know, we did all that site work, prep work, and they're not even using it currently.
The frustrating factor is, you know, it's a GDOT project. They don't necessarily keep us completely informed.
Well, and keep in mind, some of that easement is construction easement, too.
It is, that's correct.
The letter that came out called it a truck apron, like one item, not, not multiple pours, just one item, a truck apron. So, I, you know, is that, the truck apron is the center?
Yeah, probably.
I would think so, yes.
It's not any part of the exits or, or edging or around the exterior of this mini circle? I, I don't know. I just, I, I assumed it was one pour, one item they had to do.
Bobby, I could be wrong, but the way they have those lines painted off to the edges of the center, it appears like they're going to do those little concrete islands, appears, based on where they painted those lines. Because what good are those lines otherwise? Because people don't tend to, other than, you know, don't go in another lane. They can drive right over there. There's nothing to keep them. You know what I'm talking about? The ones they put on the, that help direct the cars to go the correct way. It appears that they have set it up to do that, but I haven't seen a picture.
And that, what, what they've got out there now, I, I would assume is temporary striping. Their, their, their final striping is going to be thermoplastic, I believe, which is a lot more visible at night, you know, the reflectivity of it's a lot better, so. Yeah, I'm sorry that we don't, I can't get any more specific with it, but.
Well, I think you've said a, a lot by telling us that we, the city doesn't know a whole lot more than what GDOT tells us, and we're trying to get out the information that we do have. Okay, I think that's enough on the, on the roundabout. Let's, Ms., I didn't get to you. Did you have any questions on this transmittal letter? Okay, all right. Ms. McPherson, what's the next category?
If I can jump to page 25, I'm just going to work my way through the book and as everybody else has questions.
Now, is that capital?
Um, yes, yes. Capital tab, page 25, and I'm just clarifying where we put streets and sidewalks on the Douglas County, that we are also talking about the asphalt paths.
We are.
I believe you alluded, okay, I'm good on that. That's done. Anybody else got anything in that section?
All right, does anybody got anything on capital projects? Mr. Carter? Mr. Young?
Well, I'm not prepared. I'm still digesting the change to the, to the social media post I posted about the roundabout that is all wrong now.
Mr. Montahan? All right, you want to turn your mic on? All right, we moving on to expenditures? All right, Ms. McPherson.
Page 29.
Okay.
Just want to bring attention, okay, so 29, proposed budget, down line items 3520 and 3910, which is firefighting and animal control for Douglas County. So, I want to bring attention to the fact that we do pay all that, even though everybody that lives on the Douglas County side pays county taxes. But, also on the animal control, can we at least get a report from them? At one time, a number of years ago, we did on what the activity is. In other words, the service we're getting. Can we get some sort of report from Douglas County on the service that's being provided through animal control? I also know we've had a few problems now and then. I haven't heard it lately. Y'all may be getting it, because I don't represent that, that side, but I still hear about it sometime with where the ambulance is or isn't, and with the fire control and capital. So, that's not my personal concern, but if that's an issue, maybe they need to be providing us some information on it. Hopefully, those things have been cleared up.
We've had some, some recent meetings on this, so we do have some information on it. We don't really get a report, but we do do a quarterly principals review with Douglas County, where they bring in some of their, you know, the last one included the fire chiefs and the deputy fire chiefs and the chairman and the county commissioner, where we got some updates on this. But, we don't get a written report. If one is available, that would be probably something we could request. Would you at least do that? Because I'd like to see it. All right, Mr. Carter.
Okay, it says animal control. That is Carroll County and Douglas County or just Douglas County?
We don't pay Carroll County.
Carroll County is paid through property tax. Douglas County, we pay outright.
Okay.
Mr. Young, anything on, okay. Mr. Montahan, okay? Let's go ahead and move on. Ms. McPherson, are you going to general fund next? You have anything under general fund?
My next tab is under general. General fund, page 33.
Okay.
I circled like the mayor, mayor and council travel and also education, and I wrote an error with actuals. So, I guess I'm trying, there's zero change. Oh, the reason I guess I wrote actuals, the actuals were quite a bit different from what was budgeted. Now, it was a unique year the year before, but we did go this year. So, there may be some additional funds in there, because none of us ever do all that training also. I, I imagine there'll be a little extra money coming out of that. Also, on line item, well, okay, right under, at the bottom, okay, at the bottom of the educational training, there's nothing allotted for education and training for boards and commissions. Can somebody tell us about that? Because historic preservation, PMZ, how does that all come into play? Because it is important.
So, where is that? Because I see that there's also none for any of the previous years, so it must be somewhere else.
It's within the individual departments?
It's inside the.
It's in community development, sir.
For these?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Okay.
All right. Okay, does anyone else have any, any questions or any items they want to bring to the attention from the, from this section? All right, seeing none, let's move on.
Wait a minute.
Okay, Mr. Carter.
The professional, year-to-date, 54,000. What in the world is that?
Show me where we're at, sir.
I'm still on that page 33.
Okay, but where?
Item, right on the services.
That is, the majority of that is.
That looks like a big number. That's what jumped up, totaled up.
The consultant that's helping us set up the TADs, the majority of that is him. We also, anytime we look to sell property, we have to get appraisals. That's included in there, or that might be in the city manager's side. But, that is the consultant helping us with the TAD.
No, the.
Professional.
Okay.
I didn't, I could give you the 21, 200. It was a big number for this, up to date 10 through 10 months.
Yeah, 54,071, yeah, okay. Mr., anybody else have any questions in this section?
I don't have a question in this section, but what, we were handed out this. What is, where, where does this fit into that?
That is what she explained earlier, the items that were requested and eventually cut.
Okay.
So the first one says what was requested and then what actually made it to the budget.
Which is why I can't find what I was looking, what I saw in here, in here. That makes sense.
Maybe right across the top of it, you know? Left out of budget or cut from the budget. Okay, let's move on to, um, what, what is your next section?
City manager.
Do you have, you have questions in there?
Uh, page number thirty-six.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Um, there's some items that are saying, the notations, notations off to the right, in the middle say added DCM to department. What's DCM?
Deputy City Manager.
Oh, okay. I appreciate that.
All right, anything else in here under city manager?
Department manager training, uh, education training. I know we've had this in some previous years, um, wait, it's up two-hundred-and-ninety-five percent. Well, okay, so we had allotted for it, it's, why are they all blank?
It was never, it was never twenty thousand dollars before.
Yeah.
Yeah, um-
Compared to the previous year, that's a big number.
Well, we've never been able to do it the way we wanna do it. Um, in twenty-nineteen, we spent sixty-eight hundred dollars. We did some of it that year, but, uh, the hope is to do more extensive training for the department manager, not just the ten department heads, but the department manager, sergeant leveling up. That's about forty people. But Tom had success with it at his previous city, well, in Fairburn. We'd like to do some more intensive training for our manager leveling up.
So there, it went beyond the department heads, because I originally understood it when we talked about it several years ago. It was you and the department head. So then my only concern would be this, that we actually maintain the people that we're doing this with, because that's a significant amount of money to invest in training and